Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Danielle McCray, Councilwoman representing the 2nd District and Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have members of the Committee, James Torrance from the 7th District,
Thank you, Madam Chair.
and also Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
From the Council President's staff within chambers, we have Preston Lewis. And from the Mayor's Office within chambers, we have Nina Themelis and Sophia Gabrin-Hewitt.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Matthew Peters, who is staffed to the Committee. Before we get started, if everyone could take a moment to turn off or silence your cellphone. Also, if you have joined us in the Council Chamber and you would like to testify, there is a sign-up sheet in the back of the room. Please sign in and check the box to indicate that you wish to testify. Today, the Committee is hearing Resolution 220117R, informational hearing, Baltimore Public Sanitation Homeless Encampments, for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Public Works, the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Baltimore City Health Department, the Baltimore City Police Department, and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services to brief the City Council on potential strategies for mitigating wastes left by homeless encampments, including a discussion regarding the procurement of a contracted service to clear hazardous waste from such encampments. For this hearing, we're going to start with opening remarks. Then, we're going to hear from Agency Representatives. There will also be a brief presentation from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. And then Committee members will have an opportunity to ask questions. After that, the public will have a chance to testify on the resolution. First, I want to thank Councilwoman Porter for introducing this resolution. Addressing encampments and the subsequent waste left behind has been a prevailing conversation for decades. Various administrations have taken differing approaches to address this. Yet, the issue has persisted, impacting encampment residents and the surrounding communities. Municipalities across our country have deployed a diverse set of methods to tackle homelessness, service individuals who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness and sanitize encampments. As our city addresses the prevailing issue of homelessness and considers the best formula for servicing our most vulnerable population, we must continue to evaluate our efforts around homeless encampments, current challenges, and come up with innovative solutions that equitably aid all stakeholders. At this time, we're going to hear from Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I just want to note that above all else, we are here today to discuss the needs of our neighbors. I say neighbors because many people, when they think of persons experiencing homelessness, they think of people that can be discarded. They think of people that can be just left behind. These neighbors want to make sure that they and their families are not exposed to the trash and waste in their communities as well. We are also here to discuss our neighbors who deserve to have private, safe, and clean places to eat, sleep, and use the restroom. Today, we will use phrases such as "persons experiencing homelessness", unhoused people, and occasionally homeless people interchangeably. It can become very easy to other people, especially when we feel that our own safety is being put in danger. A person's housing status does not give reason to overlook their humanity. And I believe that our words have power. And I believe that challenging our society to really embrace humanity, to really embrace sanitation, and to really embrace dignity for persons experiencing homelessness throughout our city. Our office has received numerous, numerous concerns related to encampments that are housed throughout my district and, as Chair McCray mentioned, throughout the entire city. It's time that we use our leverage of our additional funding from ARPA, from our additional funding throughout our agencies to really, really understand and provide actionable, tangible solutions to persons experiencing homelessness. So, one of my first charges is to really look at the sanitation issues that we're facing in our encampments. And in subsequent hearings, we'll be asking questions and providing accountability to not only the citizens of Baltimore, but to also those experiencing homelessness as well. They deserve the dignity and respect that we provide any and every person within our city. Thank you so much, Chair McCray.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. We've also been joined by Councilman Mark Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we're going to hear from Agency Representatives, Committee Members. I'm just asking that you hold your questions. Until we have heard from all Agencies, we are actually going to start with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. And they will be sharing a presentation.
Thank you, Chairwoman McCray. Do I have to hold? Okay. Wasn't sure how sensitive it was. Good morning, Chairwoman. Good morning, Councilmembers and public. My name is Bill Wells. I'm the Deputy Director for the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. Irene Augustin, our Director, is currently on an airplane and so could not be here for this hearing. At MOHS, our task is to ensure that homelessness is rare, brief, and nonrecurring. People experiencing homelessness are residents of Baltimore City. And they unfortunately have fallen into times and circumstances where they've lost their housing. MOHS works to help individuals and families resolve their housing crises and connect them to housing, support services, and the things that will help them rebuild their lives. The presentation that I'm going to go through, as briefly as possible, but as detailed as you would like, walks through some of our outreach efforts and also some of the other efforts that surround them to address encampments. While many people try to connect to shelter, there are some individuals who will not go into a shelter. There are a variety of reasons for that. They include past trauma with being in shelter and other services, shame in using services, mental health or behavioral health challenges, as well as interactions with the criminal justice system. The goal of Homeless Outreach is to meet people where they are, build relationships and trust with them that will allow us to help connect and provide services to anyone experiencing homelessness. MOHS funds three outreach programs. We have a small outreach office and team at the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. We also fund a small outreach program at the Downtown Partnership of Baltimore and a larger outreach program through People Encouraging People, or PEP. All of the outreach efforts are coordinated by the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. And in order to better serve individual areas, we've divided up which outreach teams focus on which council districts, with MOHS being the greenish-blue, Downtown Partnership being yellow, and PEP being the pink. Now, there's an obvious discrepancy in the size of the city covered. And I wanted to address that. PEP is larger as an outreach organization and covers different areas. We know that homelessness impacts different areas of the city differently. And so, we've sized the areas that the outreach teams focus on based on what we see in those areas and also each team's ability to handle that size geography. So, we're talking about services. And this slide represents the array of services that Outreach offers to individuals who we encounter on a daily basis. And I'll highlight some of them. Crisis intervention, emergency shelter placement, navigation to permanent housing. That can be through our own services or through partner organizations. Connection to legal services. Access to water, food, laundry, showers, clothing, hygiene kits, bus passes, and other basic needs. In addition, one of the things that we do at the point that we encounter individuals experiencing homelessness is try to assess what do they need to be able to move into permanent housing. And so, assistance with obtaining benefits and vital documents can be key to overcoming the challenges that are keeping someone in homelessness. Other services. Currently, MOHS partners with Generosity Global to provide mobile showers and case management services. This is, since it's outdoors and has running water, only available in the warmer months. But we are also looking at how we can expand those services. Homeless Outreach increases outreach efforts in the winter months in order to provide transportation, to expanded shelter capacity during code-blue, winter, cold-weather declarations. In addition, we've used our ESGCV, or CARES, money to fund the Franciscan Center to provide food to encampments during the pandemic, in which the city followed CDC guidance on encampments in terms of how we treat those who are living in encamp situations. In addition, HUD recognized recently the specific problem and need to address unsheltered homelessness and announced a specific unsheltered homelessness funding opportunity. That's one of two open funding opportunities from HUD currently. We are wrapping up our application for the Continuum of Care. That provides about $25 million to support housing and helps keep 1,500 people housed every year in Baltimore City. The Unsheltered NOFO is a new opportunity, and Baltimore City is in the process of applying for it. Both of these NOFOs, or notices of funding opportunity, are highly complex, require very detailed writing and requirements to meet HUD's guidelines for the submission of the applications. The Unsheltered NOFO requires partnership with our housing authority and hospitals as well. The COC program competition is due at the end of this month. And the Unsheltered NOFO is due on October 20th. So, encampments. MOHS keeps an updated list of known encampments. That list can vary depending on how you define encampment. We use information gathered by all three outreach teams in order to track where individuals are living in unsheltered encampments. Homeless Outreach provides services to our neighbors who are residing in encampments by helping to connect them to housing and other support services as they are willing, in addition to providing other personal necessities. To help keep areas clean, MOHS provides encamped residents with trash bags. And they can determine what is trash and keep it separate from their personal belongings. We also coordinate with the Department of Public Works, or DPW, to create a cleaning schedule for some encampment locations. We also coordinate with Wreckin Parks and Department of Transportation as different areas of the city are under the jurisdiction of different departments. And so, we work with each one depending on where the area is. Nationally, best practices have shown that communities that effectively address shared use of public space do so through partnerships between the public and private sectors. Mayor's Office is collaborating with the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness, or USICH, to identify national best practices for encampments in public areas and develop and implement strategies to meet the unique needs of Baltimore City. We ask that anyone who is requesting outreach services, whether that's a council member or the general public or an individual who finds themselves unhoused or living on the street, contact outreach through specific channels. We have a phone number that goes directly to our outreach team. That's 410-545-1862. Again, that's staffed during regular business hours. After hours, you may contact 211. They will get that information to our outreach team directly. We also maintain an email address, homelessoutreach@baltimorecity.gov. And we also have on our website a section where you can get help. That includes emergency shelter, outreach, and other resources. So, that's the conclusion of my presentation about outreach and our approach to encampments. I'm not sure, Chairwoman, how you would like to proceed.
Thank you, Deputy Director Wells. We're going to hear from Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Marsha Collins. I'm Chief of the Office of Legislative Affairs for the Department of Public Works. I have with me here today Yvonne Moore Jackson, who is the Acting Bureau Head of Solid Waste. And we also have Ms. Toya Sykes Coats and Mr. Michael Lucas here as well to help answer any questions the Committee may have. In our brief written response, we talk about the fact that in working with homeless encampments and the concerns around waste, we always coordinate through the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. We want to be careful to make sure that if we are picking up trash, that it is actually trash, that we respect the fact that these folks have their own personal belongings. And the fact that MOHS provides bags and gives them a heads-up whom will be there, it really has helped to keep us on track and not interfering or mistakenly removing something that wasn't designated to be removed. So, we really rely in our relationship with Mayor's Office of Homeless Services to coordinate these kinds of activities. We have an internal SR system that MOHS provides us for areas that need to have trash cleaned or do a general cleaning. And again, any general cleaning of an encampment site, whether occupied or unoccupied, is always coordinated with their offices. And we'll be happy to answer any questions when the Committee is ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Health Department?
Hello, how are you doing? Thank you. So, my name is Kelly Eastman. I'm here for the Baltimore City Health Department. Would you stand by our report? Did you want me to go into any of the details on that today?
Standing by the report is okay with me. DHCD?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Scott Davis from DHCD. We stand by report and respectfully defer to MOHS.
Okay. Police Department?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator with BPD. I'm joined by Colonel Kevin Jones. We stand by our report and have no objection to the bill. And we're happy to answer any questions that the Committee may have.
And last, the City Solicitor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Hoxtettler from the City Solicitor's Office. The Law Department stands by its report and approves the resolution for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor to Committee Members for questions. And I'm going to start. This one is regarding ARPA. We know that in February, Mayor Scott announced that the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services would receive $90.4 million in total, including $75 million in ARPA funding to address homelessness and invest in homeless services. What portion of that funding, if any, is going towards bolstering efforts to clean homeless encampments?
Chairwoman McCray, thank you. The ARPA funds were specifically designated and applied for four, five specific areas. None of those areas specifically addressed sanitation in encamped areas. They addressed things like permanent locations for emergency housing or shelter, increasing the supply of housing and navigation to housing, as well as increasing flexible funds that can be used to divert folks who have a small, one-time need to keep them from becoming homeless or a larger need, but one that can be identified and addressed quickly to get them out of homelessness.
Thank you for your response. I'm going to double to the Department of Public Works. Within your report, you guys outlined that you were granted permission from the Department of Finance to procure a six-month emergency cleaning contract. What's the status of that contract?
Good morning, Yvonne Moore Jackson. So, the contract has been approved and we have the purchase order. The contractor is ready to begin. So, that's where we are with that.
You said next week?
Well, they're ready to begin when we get a service request for it. Yes, they're ready to begin.
Okay. When will you guys start issuing the SRs to that contractor?
So, we have one in the queue that we'll be working with homeless services to clean up very shortly.
Okay. Thank you, Bureau Head Moore Jackson. So, and this is likely going to be for the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. I see also Deputy Mayor Faith Leach here. So, you may be able to answer this one. The City of Houston awarded a contract. It was about $7 million to a cleanup company to remove trash, wash, and sanitize homeless encampments. The city funded this effort with COVID relief funding. What is the feasibility of the administration using committed funds to produce a similar method to addressing this public sanitation issue? Because that, and I'm just saying that because the DPW contract is a temporary solution. It's just for six months.
Thank you, Chairwoman, for that question. So, I want to back up a little bit and talk about our overall strategy and our strategic investment plan. So, prior to going through the ARPA process, MOHS actually went through a pretty extensive strategic investment planning process. And they actually produced a strategic plan for ending homelessness through specific investments. So, it's about 80 to 90 pages long. And so, a lot of that was done through partnership with the COC, through conversations with individuals with lived experience. And that's how we came up with those five major areas that we are investing ARPA dollars in. And those investments are the long-term investments that will help us to end homelessness in this city, which is the creation of affordable housing, the creation of permanent supportive housing. And so, that's kind of our longer-term vision. But you're right. In the near term, there needs to be support for those who are currently unhoused and experiencing homelessness. And so, the idea behind the contract that Bureau Head Yvonne Moore spoke through is that we're piloting this, right? So, this is the first time that the city has brought on these types of contracted services. And so, we wanted to do a pilot for six months to, one, determine what is the scope of the issue that we are attempting to address. Is it best addressed through SRs? Or, you know, should we identify targeted locations to provide this service? And so, the idea is that we are testing and iterating for the first six months to be able to expand it to something that's more long-term and sustainable.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Leach. We're going to go to the bill sponsor for some questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Deputy Mayor Leach, I wanted to follow up on the contractor because one of the things that I'm hearing is that it's mainly for just waste. But as you remember, many of the meetings that we were talking about was related to needles, related to other hazardous waste. And so, I just want to confirm that that type of hazardous waste is being encompassed within the six-month pilot that you're discussing.
Yes. And I want Director Yvonne Moore Jackson to confirm. But it is my understanding that it is human waste as well as sharps and needles that are located at encampment sites. Both are included in that. Is that correct, Yvonne?
Yes, that's correct. This is specific to any biohazardous waste that we encounter.
Okay. And what is the sustainability plan for after the six months? Because as Chair McCray had mentioned, this is a much longer-term issue. And this is something that is going to be prolonged after the six months. And so, you mentioned that the MOHS strategy is more of a long-term strategy that does not include sanitation within the five pillars that was mentioned in the strategic plan. And so, how does sanitation and public sanitation in general encompass or are being integrated within the strategic plan?
Yes. So, thank you for that question. So, you know, as I mentioned, this is that six-month pilot. In parallel to this six-month pilot, we actually also are working with the USICH. And there are experts and consultants through the USICH that are working with us on a public space management strategy. And so, as we are going through this pilot, we'll be able to collect data on just the number of times that we have to deploy these services, the scope of the need of these services, to bring that information back to those consultants that are helping us build out our broader public space management strategy, which will encompass not just MOHS, but DPW, DHCD, and the other partners that are here today.
Okay. And so, that public space strategy, I remember about three, four months ago, we were still talking about like the development of it. Can you share the progress of that plan so far?
Yes. So, initially, we convened a working group of many of the partners that are here today to ensure that we were clear about everyone's roles and responsibilities, right? And so, as I pulled the group together, it was more about ensuring that we had a baseline of services and understanding who was up when. Because as you mentioned at the top, we are working with some of our most vulnerable residents. And so, we want to ensure that we are compassionate when we are doing this work, especially around these encampments. And so, the initial part of that was developing our own FAQ and our own internal guidelines for how we work with encampments, which we have done. And now, the next phase of this process is where we'll be public-facing, which is why we are bringing those experts in who have helped to develop programs in Philadelphia and other jurisdictions where they are able to develop these strategies that are public and private, right? And not just the, you know, led by government. But it is a partnership between public and community. And so, again, the first part was more of the internal. And this next part will be about how we work together to maintain the actual external spaces.
Given the use of public funds, two months ago, I requested a project management plan to the Director of MOHS. Are you able to share a project management plan with Benchmark so that the Council can provide that oversight and accountability for the public funds being used for this process?
For the public space management process? We will work on sending you a project management plan on that.
Okay. Perfect.
And I will make sure that if you have not already received it, our strategic investment plan.
Okay. That works perfectly. Madam Chair, I have one more question. Can I ask? Okay. What current barriers has MOHS identified that must be removed in various programs in order to decrease the amount of encampments throughout the entire city?
Excuse me. Thank you, Councilwoman. The focus of MOHS now is sort of twofold. One, increasing the supply and availability of permanent supportive housing and housing that will meet the needs of folks who are exiting homelessness. But also, building the partnerships and services that will support folks into that housing. We believe very strongly in a housing-first philosophy. So, we don't, and lowest barrier entry into services. Having said that, we recognize that housing is not the only solution that will help keep an individual housed or move a family out of homelessness. So, our strategy revolves around making sure that we're building those partnerships and that we're providing the services that are going to get folks housed, whether that's directly from the street or whether that's from a shelter or whether that's from, you know, living doubled up in somebody else's house. But all of that depends on a larger supply of both permanent supportive housing, which is permanent housing that comes with the supportive services that individuals and families need, and also an increase in the availability of lower-income rental opportunities. And that's, you know, sorely lacking in the city, as a lot of folks have pointed out. And you'll find that a lot of our ARPA commitments directly relate to being able to, as Deputy Mayor Leach said, in the long term, have a sustainable system. We think that having that capacity will allow more folks to move out of encamped situations. But we also recognize that many of the individuals who are struggling with homelessness and are choosing to be encamped could have other opportunities. And we need to engage with them to figure out what opportunities best match their particular situation. The reasons that folks fall into homelessness and the solutions out are as individual as the person. And for us, that revolves around our outreach teams and really understanding who's there and what their needs are to get them moved on.
And I appreciate that response. One of the things that I'm really concerned about is the, one, the lack of urgency with housing individuals experiencing homelessness. We've heard from many advocates that there is a long waitlist related to the city-run hotels that the person is experiencing homelessness. They're not getting access- They're not getting access to, they're not being, they're not being triaged appropriately. And so, I'm wondering if we could really, you know, understand and really set benchmarks for placing these people into supportive housing. And the DCHD, I'm relying on you all to provide that, to provide that, that, that plan for supportive housing that can be shared through the inter-agency council with all of you all. I think that we have to get clear, we're already clear about the goals of persons experiencing homelessness. We need to really execute and provide an implementation plan to the strategic plan that you developed. And I'm not sure if that was related, I mean, I'm not sure if that was in the strategic plan, but there needs to be a lack of urgency. My office has been working with Deputy Mayor Leach, DPW, on a number, during a number of months now, and it doesn't seem to be, it doesn't seem to be any action, any formative action moving forward to housing individuals.
So, we are at capacity most days. There is a imbalance in the amount of shelter space. We did have to reduce the COVID relief shelters that were set up in the county that increased the amount of shelter capacity that we had, and that is largely driven by funding. You know, there are COVID dollars that came along with that to be able to provide that surge in, in space and, and support services. So, without, you know, having that funding and those programs, and before we were able to completely set up the, what will result from the ARPA funding, leaves us in a middle spot. And certainly, we recognize that there is a lack of capacity currently in the city-funded or the continuum of care-funded shelter spaces.
And so, I assume these two NOFOs that you all are applying for will increase the funding for this, for this area?
The unsheltered NOFO will increase services to the, you know, case management, but also specific response to individuals who are living unsheltered. It's not specifically about shelter. The program competition, our COC NOFO, that's an annual competition where we try and preserve the funding that we have in Baltimore City, that $25 million that comes from HUD, and try in various ways to, to increase where there are applications that HUD looks favorably on. So, none of that specifically addresses increasing shelter capacity. That really is through the ARPA ask for, or award for standing up permanent locations for the hotels that are now operating as, as temporary locations for shelter.
Okay. And are you able to provide, are you able to provide details related to success metrics related to that plan? Because I see that there's a breakdown here. If we have, if we don't have enough housing, housing stability, we need to get that up and running. You're saying that the ARPA funds address that issue. How, you know, the ARPA funds have been administered for a little while now. You all have gotten that. And so, is there any way that you can share those success metrics with the council?
Sure. Well, I can share off the top of my head some of them. So, the, the purchase or, or, you know, process through which the city is going to identify the hotel properties and, and control those facilities is ongoing. It involves the law department, real estate, various areas within the mayor's office. This represents something that the city hasn't really done before. We are hopeful that it will move more quickly in the next three months. There's been a lot of planning and making sure that we're doing the right thing with that large allocation of money and managing the city's risks in terms of such a large step. So, I can appreciate that externally, it looks as though there hasn't been, been progress there. In terms of the housing, we did have the Board of Estimates approve the MORP award to us that is allowing us to stand up a housing department within MOHS. That will provide housing navigation and connect folks better and more quickly to the housing opportunities that are there. In addition, it allowed us to restructure what had been one area within MOHS that did a variety of functions and break out the housing to just focus on housing. In addition, we have funds that we're working with, with DHCD, the home ARP allocation, and that will specifically go toward boosting projects that will bring permanent supportive housing online.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to move to Councilwoman Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is just to follow up to Councilwoman Porter. Mine's more so like the sustainability. One is, I just want to really see if we have any plan about tapping into Medicaid dollars to sustain the funding moving forward? Because when I was on the COC, I remember the conversation was using Medicaid dollars to permanently house persons so that we can then offset that funding away from the city. So, I just want to know where we are in terms of that planning, what consulting we've approached about it? Because if we're able to tap into Medicaid dollars and we have $25 million that we can put to other supportive housing efforts, I think that's an opportunity to actually help us with our vacancy issue in the city as well.
I'm assuming that question was addressed to me. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Yes, we have an ACIS Medicaid pilot that we're working with, with the Maryland Department of Health that is funded through Medicaid, 50%. The other 50% comes from a local match, and in Baltimore, that local match comes from the hospitals in Baltimore. Those funds allow us to leverage the Medicaid funds for individuals who are chronically homeless and Medicaid-eligible to provide essentially permanent supportive housing for them and also the supportive services that they need, given their, their many chronic conditions. So, that pilot, sorry, that pilot started out with 200. We were awarded an additional 100, so we're on track to grow to 300, and it is just starting its next five-year cycle. We've had very little turnover in the first 200 placements. I think only two out of the 200 were, could not continue with the program for one reason or another. So, the stability and the outcomes are incredible. They allow to, they allow us and Healthcare for the Homeless, who is our partner in this, to address not only the healthcare needs of those families, but also the other needs that they have in terms of housing and stability, and allow us to do it, as you said, in a way that, you know, we don't have to find the totality of that money. Our hope is that these sorts of services become more routine, and the pilot, we think, is bearing out the, sort of the dollars and cents efficacy of doing that and that it turns into permanent funding.
So, am I, this is my question for the administration. Have we consulted our federal delegation about this? Because I know that, have we, have we consulted our federal delegation? Because I know that portions of this, this Medicare funding came from the Affordable Care Act, and I know right now, the federal government is looking at expanding that same efforts. So, I wanted to make sure that, are we really advocating to our federal delegation to actually get more funding for the state of Maryland so that we, one of the largest jurisdictions, also get additional funding? I just want to make sure that's on the radar of the administration as well.
Thank you for your question and for your advocacy, Councilmen. So, we have, we are in the process now because we are standing up the next phase of the pilot of talking through all of our hospital partners and getting their commitments because they are also a part of this local match. And in one of our early conversations with the folks at Hopkins, this conversation came up about getting ACIS on this Medicaid billable glide path. And so, Hopkins has been doing their own advocacy around this. We have had some conversations mostly with the Department of Health and others in the administration, and we'll be ensuring that our delegation is up to speed on the need to get this to a Medicaid billable glide path.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have just a few quick general questions, and I'm going to move on to some city agency questions. The first one is at the May 25th, excuse me, the May 25th informational hearing, it was Baltimore's Plan for Neighbors Experiencing Homelessness and Residing in Hotels. And MOHS did provide a presentation and highlighted that there were currently 14 active encampments. As of today, how many active encampments do we have?
Thank you, Chairwoman McCray. There are 23 known areas where there are currently encampments. That breaks down to about 48 intersections where encampments are located. We have, most recently in the last week, counted 78 actual tents and about 220 people experiencing homelessness in established encampments across all 14 districts in the city.
Thank you. And for DPW, what is the cost of the pilot, the six-month pilot?
This contract is for $60,000.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to the Baltimore Police Department. Colonel Jones, if you could walk us through the, walk the committee through your role in addressing issues within and around homeless encampments, specifically, what is the department's process for collaborating with city agencies to provide resources and follow-up to individuals residing in homeless encampments following a call for service? And also, how many calls for service regarding homeless encampments do you all receive annually?
Good morning. Thank you for that. Yep. So, Baltimore City Police Department, when we do receive a call for service in reference to a homeless encampment, when the officer responds, we try to be cognizant of what we may be dealing with. So, in the past, we've normally dealt with individuals who either have sometime behavioral issues, there are other emotionally charged events that are associated with these homeless encampments. So, what we've done as an agency is we've realized that this is something that we need to be cognizant of. So, what we've done is we've created a CAD call, 85, which automatically lets an officer know as they're responding that this is a potential behavioral crisis. So, they know going in, they can hit the right mindset of de-escalation. As was mentioned before, from the other bureaus, is you have to be mindful that it's just not trash, that you are also stepping in someone's home area. So, they are cognizant of these things. This is then pushed down to them, new recruits get 16 hours of training in the academy, veteran recruits get eight hours yearly in in-service training. So, when they respond out, they identify what the situation is, is it a environmental issue, is it a non-criminal issue, is it a criminal issue? And they will address that appropriately. What we do have is our critical incident team, when there has been identified as a behavioral crisis, where they do have the ability to reaching out to our critical incident team who has 40 hours of specialized training for this, as well as a licensed clinician in mental health who can also respond during the hours of 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at night. After those hours, it is on an on-call basis. But, each officer at least has a minimum of how to deal with these situations. So, we try to deal with them as responsibly as possible through de-escalation, least intrusive, more appropriate. So, working with our partners through the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services and other co-productive agencies, we try to enable them by either 311 app or by calling them directly in reference to this is what we have here, for them to then take maybe a lead if there is a non-criminal act. Because the idea is, although we may be a first responder, sometimes when it comes to non-criminal activities, when we're talking about environmental design or, or health concerns in reference to cleanliness, we actually, we actually are the agency of the last resort. It's really, we're just kind of there to just kind of help facilitate those things on our end, but we are definitely a partner with all our agencies in this.
What's the amount of service calls that you guys are receiving annually for homeless encampments?
Do not have annually. I will follow that up with you, ma'am. I have a data-driven strategy to give you that.
We're going to list that as a committee request. Also, if you can give us just the last five years of data as well compared to this one for homeless encampments, and thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
For my last question, this is going to be regarding a leadership committee on homeless and housing that Mayor Scott established. It said it was made up of 21 people representing private and public sectors with lived experience. Can you guys walk us through what the committee is currently working on at this time?
Thank you, Chairwoman McCray. So, in March of 2022, the strategic investment plan was released that, as Deputy Mayor Leach mentioned, was the charge for where our ARPA requests would, would go, what we would seek to fund. But, then we realized that the committee that we had stood up as part of that, that leadership committee for the strategic investment plan, we needed to continue that work and the, the folks who were brought together to, to do that work. And so, the Leadership Committee on Homelessness and Housing was formed after that, earlier this year, to guide the strategic plan to help Baltimore achieve our House America goals and implement the ARPA-funded projects. That committee is co-chaired by Director Augustine, as well as Alice Kennedy, the Director of, excuse me, Commissioner for DHCD. Members include representatives from homeless services and housing providers, the philanthropic community in Baltimore specifically, with an emphasis on funding resolutions and services for homelessness, as well as representatives from other city departments and drawing on folks with lived experience of homelessness. The Baltimore COC, Continuum of Care, has a lived experience advisory committee, and there are members from that committee. As a matter of fact, the past Chair of the LEAC is now the co-chair of the Baltimore Continuum of Care. And so, there are members from the LEAC, but also members from the Youth Advisory Board and other folks who represent other areas of lived experience with homelessness on the leadership committee, excuse me, homelessness and housing committee. The leadership committee includes three subgroups, a steering committee, a work group that's focused on rehousing, and a housing creation work group. So, to address the, the issues and the ARPA asks around increasing housing opportunities. There is a webpage that will be going live in October that will have reports from the committee, as well as action steps and what our progress is. This is particularly important as we look for the, as the committee is supporting and, and pushing the House America goals for the city. So, that will be a way for us to report out on those achievements as well.
Thank you Deputy Director. This is going to be more so of a comment. I think that there is a role, a large role, that that committee could actually play in just supporting efforts and providing insight on how to deal with, obviously, some of the issues with public sanitation and how we can be there for our residents who are within the homeless encampments. At this time, Councilwoman Porter, did you have any additional questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, so what we're going to, are you guys good over there? Okay. So, we're going to move into public testimony, thanks to all of our agencies who provided their reports and also answered the questions of the committee. We're going to move into public testimony, members of the public. You will have three minutes each. We have a large amount of folks who do want to testify, so you will have three minutes to provide your testimony. As a reminder, if you are in the council chamber and you would like to testify, please sign the sign-in sheet at the back of the room if you have not already done so. If you have joined us through WebEx and you would like to testify, please use the raise hand function to let us know. I'm going to start with the sheet that I have in front of me. I'm asking all folks who want to testify to please state your full name when you come to the mic, and if you are representing an organization, please provide that information as well. We are going to start with Minister Christina Flowers.
Good day, all council. I want to start by addressing some issues.
And ma'am, before we start, can you just state your name?
Minister Christina Flowers, Director of Belvedere Real Care Providers.
Thank you.
Homeless organization. I want to think about the meeting we I want to think about the meeting we sat in yesterday, talking about the $90.4 million in ARPA. I think, as quoted here, it's a long-term plan for that money. Nothing urgency. I sat there with 10 unsheltered homeless people experiencing homelessness on the streets. None of their questions could be answered in reference to, where can we sleep tonight? The overcrowdness of the shelters, the environment of the shelter was a big issue. Better yet, talking about the environment of the encampments, let's start with the environments of the shelters like the Wyng Bird Center. If we want to start with transparency in the city, we have to start with some accountability from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, where there is no urgency with dealing with our unsheltered, chronically homeless individuals, where you have probably close to about, other than that 23, Mr. Wells, you might have about 10 pocket encampments that I don't believe homeless services even come to. If you would like to know, call my office. I would gladly expose them to you. But some individuals don't choose to be engaged by ineffective services because, again, they're still on the streets. And the environments, I think Madame Porter herself and myself last month had a task of the tapsico and pootie environment, which I've drawn up a lot of concerns of the environment. It's a pool of water back there that looks very unenvironmental inviting. I think about two years ago, it was, it was told that this is like some kind of place where they used to discard a lot of hazardous material, where you have individuals living back there. I think the biggest thing, because we was under encampment for about eight months, I don't remember nobody bringing us a trash bag, better yet, picking up the trash. But I know once we cleared that environment, it was pretty livable for the cars that's under there now. So it's not so much about their environment, it's about empowering them with the resources to keep their environment clean. We don't need no contractor spending more money to go towards something where, again, there's no urgency about the individuals that's living outside. Long-term plan for ARPA money is the five strategic plans. Nowhere was discussed yesterday, an emergency plan for the individuals on the street. Nowhere was discussed yesterday was the emergency plan for even the vouchers that have been given out but has not been accounted for. So I think transparency will be a big issue when we come to these type of meetings. And if you really want to empower individuals, Mr. Wells, let's work together. Let's stop being so discriminative and invasive of organizations that are out here on these streets, engaging, cleaning the encampments, and making sure their day-to-day needs met. I don't know if you would have any questions of that nature, because we don't talk too much. But again, when it comes to urgency in the homeless population, I am the sheep over that population. And as I told Ms. Irene, you will not end homelessness in Baltimore City without working collaboratively.
Mr. Flowers, we appreciate your testimony. If you could just close out for me.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for your time, and let's work together on this issue.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We're going to move on to, I believe this is Ms. Val Wiggs.
Good morning. My name is Valry Diggs. I'm homeless. I live at the shelter at 101 South President Street. I've been there for about 17 months. I have been to housing in different places trying to get some help for affordable housing or somewhere to live, and I keep getting the same answer over and over again. I just want somebody to help me, put me in the right direction for some help so I won't be homeless the rest of my life. So I need some help, so I don't know what to do. And I know it's a lot of vouchers and 30% places and stuff like that, especially by me being a senior citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggs. We have a lot of agencies within. Can someone make contact with Ms. Wiggs before she leaves the chambers? Thank you. We're going to move to Ms. Claudia Wallace.
The reason why I'm here, I'm also, I'm Claudia Wallace, and I'm from Val Housing LLC. So my question is the same of where's, where's the urgency for homelessness? I do my own private company, but I'm receiving more and more calls, and it's for people that we can't help because by us being private, we don't have the funding as Baltimore City. And what I'm not understanding is why I'm getting calls from hospitals and places that are being funded by Baltimore City, but is not helping evidently if I'm getting the calls. So what I'm saying, what is the urgency for these people who need help right now? Because some of them can be placed, but they don't have the funding to be placed. So once again, that's my question. What is the urgency?
Thank you, Ms. Wallace, for your testimony. We have Mr. Howard Floyd next.
First of all, I'd like to say good morning to everyone, and I thank God for waking me up this morning. I'm not sure I'm in the right place, but I thank God I'm here anyway.
And sir, sir, can you, can you just state your name for the record? Thank you.
Howard Floyd. Well, I would say I'm glad I'm here, and I'm like, I'm not sure, but I'm glad I'm here because I was blessed to get a voucher this year. But my health got kind of bad, and it expired. And then my mother got sick. She's 97. I'm 63. And I didn't have been able, health-wise, to go out and look for a place. So all I, I'm glad I'm here though, but all I think I need to do is go back to housing and tell them exactly what went on in my life. I talked to my psychiatrist and my therapist. They supposed to be writing me a letter, let them know that what kind of medication I'm on and everything, and what happened. I was abused where I was, where I stay at now. I was stalked on and beaten in my face. And I called the police, and they said they didn't see it and wasn't nothing they could do. God bless, and God bless all y'all for hearing my statement.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony. We have Ms. Nadine Gale.
Good morning. My name is Nadine Gale. I am also a participant in one of the shelters that the city is helping. I know due to this temporary shelter, I would like to get permanency. I need security. I need somewhere where my family can be reunited back with me because children, some children in some shelters are not allowed with the parents. But you try to keep your kid, my children's shelter, from having to even be accepted to, you know, acceptable to that kind of living because I'm trying to keep them as a child as long as possible. So my concern is, my Section 8 came through. One, they don't correspond with the city Section 8 list, and that put me on hold as far as receiving my approval Section 8. And I see a lot of other things are urgent, trash cans, trash bags. I don't, I don't see no human regard for, for the things that we need to survive out there. It's a chain reaction. You homeless, now you got to find a way to keep surviving, surviving. Then we look to other things that we become so accustomed to, and then the jails fill up with more homeless people. And then it trinkle down to more addiction, and then it trinkle down to more breaking and entering, just trying to survive out there. And I don't want to be one of those ones. It's been four years I've been homeless due to the pandemic. And y'all say resources, resources. I look at it as, as long as you get the numbers, it's no concern after that because you're getting a grant. I want to be looked at as an individual and not just a number. And I just need to be more heard rather than just put in a category of less than. I pay taxes too. At this time, I'm, I'm on hardship now. The referrals don't work. I did my own staff work. I went to those different places to receive assistance and been turned away. Without adequate funding, bus passes, I hear about that, that's limited. That's limited, but y'all willing to give them equipment to use. I don't understand the urgency in homelessness. I mean, it's, I guess, more beneficial to give them meth or some toxins than to put me somewhere where I can be reunited with my family. That's all I have to say. Thank you all.
Ms. Gale, thank you for your testimony. On my sheet that closes out who I have that's signed up, but is there anyone else from the public who would like to share testimony at this time? Please come to the, to the mic, sir, and please just state your name. If you're with your organization, please state that as well. Thank you.
Good morning to Deputy Mayor, Chair, and to City Council members, to Colonel Jones. My name is Dr. Andre Humphrey, and I'm the Chief of the Baltimore Trauma Response Team. And lately, I've been noticing the situations with the homeless. I've tagged along many years with Minister Christina Flowers and noticing that a lot of the homeless is dealing with mental health issues and traumatized. I came today not to point the finger at anyone, but to offer solutions and come to work together to help this situation because not getting into numbers and funding, some of you may have seen me on the news talking about the work that I do, but my credibility speaks for itself. Longtime partner with Baltimore City Police Department for over 36 years. I'm just here wanting to know, Colonel Jones, what can we do, what can I do to help the situation with the homeless? And if anyone want my information, I'd be more than glad to give it to you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Humphrey. We are going to check online, WebX. Again, if you would like to testify virtually, you would just need to use the raise hand We do not have any virtual attendees at this time who are indicating that they wish And please bear with me, everyone. Okay, so we're going to close out public testimony. I want to thank everyone for joining us this morning. The committee is going to schedule a follow-up meeting in the future to get additional information and continue this important discussion. This hearing is now in recess.